First of all, we're going to call to order the two boards that are here. The Village Board and the Board of Appeals. I'll call to order the Village Board to order and then I'll ask the Village Board Commissioner, Chairman, to also call his board to order and ask for a roll call. So, before I do that, this is, well, I think it's my remarks, but I'm glad that everyone came out to hear this. This is the first time I've ever been involved in a comprehensive plan and this is what we're here for. We have the company that's going to be doing it for us, but I'll get into that when we get to the remarks. But just so you know, we're going to call each board separate to order. And at this time, I'll call the Village Board to order and please call the roll of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to ask that each trustee introduce yourself, starting with trustee Todd.
Trustee Lex Todd.
Trustee Bernie Spurrow.
Trustee Ronald Paul Carter III.
Trustee Beth Zupan.
Trustee Roger Grant.
Okay, board is here. And Mr. Chairman, you want to call your board to order?
I'll call the board to order. Introduce ourselves. And the Chairman, Charles Pondexter.
I'm Darryl Comey.
Chair Noah.
Chad Todd.
Lee Holden.
Okay, so you have a floor. Um, yes, Mr. Farmer, another board member. It'd be noted that Mr. Farmer is really present. Mr. Farmer, we have to sit right up here. Today, we're going to inform, and I'm sorry, Tessa is going to come and ask questions of the Village Board and the Village Board. Anything that they may have, they're going to present what they have so far presented, and they're going to explain to the board and to everyone some of the things that they're doing to get this comprehensive plan together. The last time that we had a comprehensive plan was 1999. So this is something that would carry on. That was 20 years ago, so who knows how long this is carrying on. But this is, and then they will explain what a comprehensive plan entails, what it's to do for the community. We were able to secure a grant to pay for this, so I, I don't, well, okay, it didn't cost a bill to anything, but I'm just so glad that we were able to get that grant. Usually it's in hundreds of thousands of dollars to make this happen. So without further ado, and not to keep everyone too long, Mr. Pondexter, do you have anything to say on behalf of the Village Board of Appeals?
Yes, you know, this is the first time to be involved in a comprehensive plan for me. I worked as a building engineer for certain towns, I was a go-kart suburb, and I also learned that people don't plan to fail, they fail to plan. So it's a good thing that we're involved here, the trustees and the board members, that we can come up with a plan to make soft villages a nice place to live.
Okay. At this time, I'll turn it over to our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Joseph Wazwa. You can take that mic right there.
Excuse me one second. Everyone here, please cut your cell phone or microphone.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to kind of reiterate what Mayor Burgess was saying about the comprehensive plan. About a year ago, we applied to CMAP, which is the Chicago Reciprocal Agency on Planning. We applied for a local technical assistance grant. And what that does is CMAP allows the use of funds and/or service, services through CMAP. Part of that is for the comprehensive plan. There's also other grants that are available, technical assistance that the village can get, which we'll be exploring those options here soon. But we applied for that local technical assistance grant and we were awarded that. As the mayor said, the Village Comprehensive Plan was not updated since 1999, but the comprehensive plan dated back to 1980, so it's a very dated document. One of the things that TESSCA, our consultant that we chose for this, is kind of tasked with is kind of giving us a workable document, not something that, you know, can sit on a shelf and look pretty for the next 20 years. Hopefully, we update it before that. We want to have something that we can actually refer to and work with and not just, you know, save a different plan. So we want something that can be a workable plan for the next, you know, 20, so a year or so. That's what we're looking for on this. I would like to, first of all, acknowledge Stephen, I didn't say Scott, Stephen Ostrander, who is our contact person at CMAP. He's been fantastic to work with. He could not make it here tonight. He sends his regrets. So that's pretty much it. I wanted to keep it short, so without further ado, I'm going to introduce Scott Goldstein. He's our lead consultant with TESSCA Associates.
Apologies for speaking behind you, Mayor.
That's okay.
Village Clerk. And thank you, Mayor, and Chairman Pondexter, for the warm reception you had, and Joe's done a fantastic job today. My name is Scott Goldstein. I am urban planner with TESSCA Associates. Been doing planning for 25 years, all throughout Chicago area, and I really like to focus in the communities like this, a small community that's really been working hard to improve its economic development and residential community. So the first question is, why are we here tonight? Why do a comprehensive plan? And there's a couple of reasons for that. Obviously, it's a guide for growth and a guide for investment. So it's a decision-making plan. In the business world, you would always want to have a plan for how you're spending your resources, and it's really no different in the public sector. But it's also a promise of how to work together and a way to get other agencies to be on the same page. And so you've had a good track record of being able to work with Cook County, maybe to work with IOD. To make complex projects happen, you need a lot of partners. They're each doing his part. And so we hope that this comprehensive plan process will be able to get commitments from the school districts, from the township, from the county, to all be on the same page. Focuses on the village's vision for the future and is also a chance to reflect and connect to find out. We hope not to have an 800-page document at the end. We want to have an easy-to-use document that you can refer to on a regular basis and you can use as backup to support seeking out grants and other resources. What we typically have in comprehensive plans is a section on economic development, on housing, transportation. Stormwater is a pretty sizable issue in Sock Village. We're going to be working on stormwater. In open space, you've got the Forest Preserve District just to the east, and how can that be a better resource? You've got parks scattered throughout the village. Community facilities, you've got a beautiful facility here, but there's other community facility needs that need to be planned out for the next five, 10, 15 years. And most importantly is implementation. Sometimes people say, how is the plan most useful part is the back? You flip to the back and you see the implementation chart, what are the projects, actions, and partners that are willing to step up to help lead those projects? And so we really want to give you a very usable document at the end of the day. Just last year, you have a plan for progress, and that really lays out a vision for Sock Village. We're not doing that over, we're starting from where you left off, and I think there was a very strong vision in that document. So our team includes Abraham Lacy, who's here tonight, Executive Director of Farsaw CDC, Bobby Moore, from TESSCA. We also have one of the best transportation firms in the region, Public Infrastructure Engineering, and as well as AECOM. AECOM is based in Chicago, the staff working on this, market analysis, but they have the resources of a nationwide database. So we think we've got a great team together to help implement the vision that you've set out last year about establishing a foundation for the future, about more efficient and innovative village government, how can we do more with less, about how to build strong cohesive neighborhoods. So we are going to start from there, and tonight, we're going to get a little input from you on that vision. First, fundamentals of a comprehensive plan is both within the village current boundaries as well, in Illinois state law allows for planning up to a mile and a half beyond your boundaries. So that's looking at the unincorporated areas beyond the village boundaries. That stops at the state line with Indiana, but in terms of market considerations, we're also going to be looking into residents buying habits on the Indiana side as well. So what this map shows you is Sock Village in the center, as well as this mile and a half prime area that we'll be looking at over the next several months of all of you. Outreach is key to all of this, and we look at the Village Board, the Plan Commission. We have the Advisory Committee that's been established, already met once, and we need it again next week. It's really important to this process, and you are all our eyes and ears and our messengers to both understand other interests in the community as well as to let people know what's happening. There is a website that is always set up called SockVillagePlan.org, and you can let people know that that website is available. All of the resources of the plan will be at that website. There's also a button down there called Share an Idea. You can get to it on your phone, you can get to it on your computer. But if you go by a place in Sock Village, or really anywhere, that you think shows an example of what should be done in Sock Village, or something you don't want to see happen, take a picture of that site, let us know, just in a few words, why you took that picture and sent it, so it's as easy as that. Anyone in Sock Village can do that in a minute. In addition, we'll be available to go to community events as well as community meetings. The first large public meeting will be on September 12th, right here at the Municipal Center, and that'll be the first large community meeting. And we'll certainly need your help in terms of letting people know what that meeting is. We also have another community meeting later on in the process. Any questions about outreach? We're also doing interviews and focus groups. We've already met with about 20 people so far. We're going to continue to do that over the summer. Okay. So one of the first steps we did was to look at the 1999 comprehensive plan and interview staff in terms of what's been accomplished, what needs to be done. The good news is a lot of the recommendations in that plan actually have been implemented in that period of time, and so that's not always the case. There were some things that were significant changes, and logistics center wasn't even a possibility back in 1999, so that was a big change. But when we look at the recommendations in terms of annexations and boundaries, it stayed fairly close to the plan from 1999. Vehicular and pedestrian transportation. A lot of those recommendations, they still need to be implemented. We still need sidewalks continuous on Sock Trail, Torrance Avenue, so we're going to look and help you find resources to implement those ideas. Parks in leisure time. Again, so we've got scattered parks, there are some backlog of capital needs we're going to need to address during the plan. Oh, but the solely right here, behind the Hilltop course, was Ed Hazel, the community center park right here was built. Neighborhood housing development. The economy went through a major boom after 1999 and then went down through the recession. We're still coming out of that recession now. So a major focus of this plan will be looking at those market variables to restore confidence in the housing market. Governmental administration cooperation. A number of things are happening recently. The 394 plan took place just two years ago. Again, we've looked through all of those materials and recommendations that were made in that I-394 plan, we'll be looking at how to implement that. Sasa Urban Land Bank was formed. You're a member of the Sasa Urban Land Bank. We're going to be meeting with Sasa with the mayor tomorrow to make sure we take advantage of all the resources in the region. Didn't do so well with the plan updates, we didn't call for an annual review of the plan, so we need to get a better review of that plan. One of the exercises we did a few weeks ago with the Advisory Committee is start to talk about the vision for the plan. And we asked you, how would you describe Sock Village now and how would you describe success in five years? So I'm going to put this up on the screen, and then I want to ask any of you who want to add to it, but the word, the most common words that came up were progress, stabilized, productive, envious, meaning other people be envious of Sock Village, better, transitioning destinations, successful, proud, growing. So that, we're going to turn that into a vision statement, but I wanted to pause to say, how would you see success over the next five to 10 years? If everything that we're talking about in terms of creating a stronger Sock Village were to be implemented, any thoughts on what's missing that's not up on the chart now? I might think I knew, Mayor, I heard something out there. I knew you were the last one. What's missing from the chart?
Anything, is that up there?
Yeah.
Um, I see just about everything with, yeah, more words to it. I would like to work with progress and success in five years. Right now, we're in progress, yeah, in five years to actually implement the work.
Anyone from the Village Board, what would you like to see happen in the next five years?
Well, bribe.
Okay.
Not just success, it was bribery.
Any other words from the night? Success over the next five years, what would you like to see implemented? We're all good? Okay, we're both fine, Mr.?
We need to find some ways to have the people rip crap and all over the town and money. Is that what you're here for? You're going to get the money, Adam?
We're going to try to help you tee up for money.
You don't have any money.
Yeah, no, absolutely. It comes on the resources.
We need help.
Need help and gain resources. Okay.
And the housing, I don't know how much more, all the housing get abandoned and have turned into second age, and then the winters just don't take care of the place, do they?
So we're definitely looking at housing stability and the market.
Yes, something. We have a lot of, yeah.
Community vacant homes.
Community vacant homes, right?
No law-keeping properties, vacant homes. I mean, I know the mayor, forget money and stuff, helped to some of them, but we have too many, and the neighbors aren't going to turn up. There are a lot of more stuff to take care of.
Okay. Yes.
And our tax base.
Industry.
Industry.
We've got to pay for it.
Okay, any other thoughts? So we're going to get to goals as we move on in the meeting. Can I open this up to the public, Joe?
Sure.
Yes, Madison Public.
Diversity.
Diversity.
Environmentally friendly.
I'm sorry?
Environmentally friendly.
Environmentally friendly. Any other thoughts from the public? Okay, so we can continue to build on this. We're going to get to goals tonight, but for a lot of this time, I know this is a general question, but did anyone else have something?
Communication.
Communication.
Yeah, the microphone holder, yeah.
All right. One of the things about planning, there's kind of a couple approaches. A lot of times, there's problems in place, housing vacancy, infrastructure needs, et cetera. And you get focused on trying to solve those problems, and that's really, really important. Our approach is to start with the community assets first and address those problems from strength. So what we did with the Advisory Committee is we had stickers and people started putting on the churches and the schools and the institutions and the other partners in the community that we can build on. If we're going to address those problems, we need to know who's going to do that, and the village can't do everything. So that's how we started. We're going to have that out, and as we leave tonight, we can add to it. But essentially, we're able to show where those schools are, where the parks are, the public forest preserve, there's five or six churches in the community. Obviously, the industry will be mapping, and that's very important. So as we build through the plan, we're going to want to talk to those folks and see what they're interested in. Oftentimes, you talk to an organization, they've been working, they've kind of been working on something for a lot of time, and they're very appreciative, so we go talk to them, say, well, why don't you become part of the plan, and that your project can be part of a bigger plan? So when you go out and get funded, you can say, this isn't just our project, it's important to the whole community. So starting with some demographics, we also have research. There's about 10,000 residents in Sock Village. That has stayed stable over the years. There's a lot of communities around here that actually lost significantly population. You stayed very stable. We'd like to see a little bit more growth, but you stayed a little bit over 10,000 over the last 10 to 15 years. The median age is a little younger than the region as a whole, and these families are moving in with children. You've got a lot of larger homes here compared to other communities that are further north, and I think that's attracting some families and bringing new spirit into schools. So within just five miles, there's 118,000 people that live near Sock Village. And so when we start looking at what types of services are available, we don't just look at the municipal boundaries. Stores don't care about the lines of municipality. They care about who's passing through, who lives nearby. And so it's a pretty dense area within five miles, and we have to look at that whole area, not just within the boundaries. If you compare Sock Village to the region as a whole, again, they're a little younger, families are a little bigger, but you're really not that far off in terms of the region as a whole. One thing a lot of people didn't know when we presented this data is education levels are going up pretty significantly in Sock Village. If you look at the bottom of the chart, the number of adults aged 25 without high school degrees went down from 20% to 15% in the last 15, 16 years. So that's a lot of things that people didn't know that was going on in the community. If you look at the top of that graph, if you look at graduate degrees, bachelor's degrees, associate degrees, it's somehow have all gone up. So all those grade bars show that the community is actually more adults of higher levels of education than in the year 2000. I'm not sure everybody would know that without looking at the data, that the education levels have gone up. And so that's a really important, at some point, if you're trying to be a retailer, serve a certain community, you want to make sure the residents in your community need the demographics of what you're selling. Those education levels going up is a very good sign. Terms of median household income, you're just under the average for Cook County, so you're at about $51,000, $51,500. Cook County is $55,800. So pretty close to the countywide average. It's a pretty healthy median income, significantly higher than some of your neighbors, a little bit lower than other neighbors. So you have to look at what types of industry, what types of commercial development are going to best fit your economics of the people living in Sock Village. By the way, if there's any questions, why, go ahead, please feel free to ask a question. So what this graph is showing is where do Sock Village residents work? I mean, when they leave Sock Village and go and go to work, where are they going? And where are employees from? Where do they live? And what it shows is the strongest connection is north-south, and that really shouldn't be a surprise, because I-394 is really your lifeline. But 1,200 of your residents are going north every day to suburbs and the city of Chicago. The greatest number of people working to Chicago within Sock Village, which makes it less sense. That's also true of people coming into Sock Village. The most common are from Chicago, southern Cook County, and Indiana. Interesting that actually more Indiana residents are coming in to work in Sock Village than Sock Village residents work in Indiana. That was a little bit of a surprise to me. I thought more people were leaving than would say, oh, I'm going to Indiana. Well, the numbers really don't show that. It's much more common to be connected to Chicago and suburbs than it is to Indiana. Not a lot of people commute not to Cook County, which is a little surprise, too. I thought more people would be working in, than to Cook County. A lot of people working in other suburbs as well. Some people are working very far away. Some people work in Chalmers, which has got to be what, hour and a half to get there, depending on traffic, et cetera. So people will have to commute jobs. Any thoughts on commuting? Okay, so we already heard housing. Housing's a concern. It's not unusual in our region. You do have a fair amount of vacancies. I work in a lot of areas, Abraham works in a lot of areas with similar housing challenges, and there's no easy answer to this, but there's a whole number of strategies that can be used. You don't see blocks where every house is vacant. When I'm looking around, it looks like a block might have one or two or three vacancies. That's a real problem, but it's not like you've got entire blocks. So what are the actions as we move forward that are going to stabilize those blocks? We don't want more vacancies to happen. And so when you start to look at some of the characteristics, the average household size is getting a little larger, the houses tend to be a little bit bigger than homes that were built 100 years ago, which Chicago Heights or suburbs further away. So you can get a four-bedroom house, get a five-bedroom house here that you might not be able to get in other communities. Your housing, households have been pretty stable, but the vacancy rate is an issue. So the last number I had available was 17%. I think that's a little high, it looks like a little less than that, but it's still too high. And so one of the major elements of this plan is to think holistically about restoring confidence in the housing market. Median household income is actually pretty good. So again, we've got an issue of households moving here, very affordable housing, which is good for people with access, but when it comes down to it, if you've got to repair your roof, are you going to be able to get that money back? You put five, six, seven thousand dollars into your roof, you want to make sure that the house is worth that much more. And if the market isn't providing that, what are we all going to do to stabilize that market so that people will continue to maintain the homes? So the homes won't deteriorate. So that's going to be a major focus of this plan. Yes?
How good are these figures here?
Well, it's a good question, I agree. We had that question, yeah, we had that question coming up at the last meeting. So there are, we spent a lot of time looking at this. There's a lot of cash sales going on that may not be picked up in the formal MLS mark. I think that's what's happening. So there might be sales at the $20,000, $25,000 level. Those are also balanced, because there's also sales at $125,000, $150,000 level.
Not in Sock.
Not on the, not on the north side of Sock Village or the south side of Sock Village.
Correct, right.
You're talking certain areas where Mayor Burgess lives, and other areas with the bigger housing, the newer houses.
So we spent a lot of time looking at this. We went through two proprietors firms. They both came in within $1,000. So all of those properties listed as sold, and sold, I think you're looking at the next slide. That $76,000 number is a good number. There may be houses selling off-market at lower values. So this is a comprehensive plan over the next 15 to 20 years. So what I would say is, let's look at the facts of the issues. The number itself is going to be hard to be precise. We know there's an issue of low-value homes being sold in cash sales. So that's, that's how I would put it, but we understand that this is...
I've seen them go through renters and stuff, houses that go down, he says, wait, $56,000, they can only sell for $23,000 because the footage is so bad.
I'm not disagreeing with that. What I'm saying is, this is, that's $63,000? These all those properties listed there are...
And what were you that listed for the areas?
Right, so...
Lincoln Meadows, Deer Creek Estates.
Those are high, correct.
Those are the normals, not the ones that were built back there in '57, '58, they built it for a start.
So again, what I would say is, this is a long-term plan, and so what we want to do is acknowledge that there are some concerns in the housing market and some very low-sale homes going forward. I don't know we're going to get a better number than 76,000 of the listing price than 63,000, because that's just the factual elements of those that are listed.
Well, even the residents in Deer Creek and Lincoln Meadows' house are not what they paid for 20 years ago. People, as myself, I'm $50,000 below, but I paid for my house 20 years ago. And the normal real estate market usually rise 10% a year. And in 2007, we lost a lot of money with our homes. So I mean, if you guys lose money in Deer Creek or Lincoln Meadows on the other side of I-394, we all are losing. It's not, it's not the point that you lose a 10 and I lose a 50. We're all losing, and no one wants to lose.
Okay, so when I'm hearing, and we had the same input at the last Advisory Committee, that this is a major concern, and people want to make sure that the housing market... this is a major concern, and people want to make sure that the housing market is going in the right direction, and as far as South Village, we really haven't pulled out of recession, that the prices are still a crisis. The median price of the, this is sale price, is $63. I'm hearing some people say that's still too high, and I get that, and I'm going to acknowledge that. Okay?
I have a neighbor who had their house up for sale for $47,000.
Right.
They couldn't sell it. They couldn't get their bank to work with them. And now they're going to the project, which ultimately means they just don't want.
That's what I've been looking for, is a lot of people walk in and tell us. They all own the house they're worth.
They don't want to know what. It's not a reverse.
Yeah, we're not the only town that has their house.
So what is the solution to the refined, to intervene in that? I can't sell it, but the bank won't work with me.
Right, so that's, right, so like I said, there's no silver bullet answer to that, but there's a whole number of strategies. Abraham works on a lot of these strategies. Home repair, housing counseling, building up a list of prospective people, marketing the village, creating an identity for the village. All of these factors have to go in. Supports for renters, renters, so landlords are maintaining their properties, then holding landlords accountable so that those properties don't decline because then that affects their neighbor. So we're going to have a whole number of recognition. Abraham, did you want to comment a little bit like that here?
I'm Abraham Lacy from the Far South Community Development Corporation. We're based in Chicago. We have three locations, two in Chicago and one in North Jersey, Indiana. This is a common problem that many villages and towns and neighborhoods that we've worked with have gone through, you know, after the recession. What we've done in Chicago was, especially looking at, if you're familiar with the West Holman neighborhood, we knew that we couldn't do the entire neighborhood. We couldn't physically try to bring up the entire market. So there were certain things that we did. There were, we pointed off what we call, in Chicago, we call it the Micro Market Recovery Program. And what that was is that we looked at a certain radius, and we said, okay, this area over here, we're seeing growth, we're seeing some development, the city made investment, we're seeing community centers in this area that were just built, and we started renovating around it. And so we spent about, close about $5 million in that neighborhood renovating vacant or abandoned single-family homes. Over the last, the next five years, we've had close to 100 reoccupations because what our goal was, not to become the chief developer for the community, but to stimulate the market, to stimulate other investors to come in and say, hey, this is a booming area. We're going to get the properties for almost looks of nothing at the same token. We can renovate and then put it back on the market. On the flip side, on the same sort of, same track, we're also working with homeowners, renters, working with them, getting them buyer-ready. What the county, Ida, every last month, have Down payment assistance program. So the great thing about the statistics that we see here, the average age is 32. That means families, that means people are looking at this time to buy homes. So you have a great opportunity to unite. You don't have to come home with money from South Village. This money's already existed from Ida and their housing program for down payment. So you're building up a pipeline. You're building up people to take advantage of these homes. So, and then what the city has done, and even the county, essentially have a South Suburban Land Bank, they were part of the property. They would hold the property. And then what you could do is that you could vote to see who gets, which developer marketed out a number of properties to developers. The same thing we did, and we're still doing. And with that, we're able to bring back the market. And then now more investors are coming in, and then we'll go to a different part of the neighborhood and say, hey, we're going to do another plan. And that's why these plans are so important because we've been through a CMAP plan for quarter over. We're also part of another plan right now. And that has springboard investors coming in because they see, wow, they have a very comprehensive strategy that invokes getting other investors involved.
Can I ask you a question? Abraham? What do you, what do you, sorry, can I already... How do you address, do you have any communities currently that you're working with where a lot of the houses we have that are abandoned and vacant right now aren't worth the investment? Because when you put the money into them, you're not going to be able to get out of them any decent return, if any kind of positive return?
So when we feel we have a certain range when it comes to properties, if, now, what we've done in other neighborhoods in Chicago and some in the suburbs is that if there are properties that are not worth the investment, it's going to cost more, we put them on the demo list. Because at the end of the day, if you want to encourage investors to come in, they don't want to come in and demo the property. That's something that maybe the city or you can work with the county to do. So for properties that are, you know, that's $5,000, $10,000, and I have to work, put money in, put money back in demos, develop a demo list, and then work with your municipalities other like county or even state to even raise money to be able to demo these things. I wouldn't, and then what that would do is, you don't try to demo everything all at once. You pick an area that you know investors are going to be interested in. And that could be near an expressway, that could be near a park, a community center, and you work with that to demo those properties and get the site ready. That's what the Far South CBT does most of the time. We get site preparation. We start preparing the land, we gather the land, we get them into, we figure out what the liens are, we figure out if there's any bad taxes, and we work to renovate or actually to get an investor in to look at this problem. Mr. Abraham, most of the people that are living in these homes is because of work. We've got a lot of land around here. We can develop an industrial park or some CBD, some central business district so that people want to work in it. For so long, this community's been a bedroom community, you work someplace else, come here to sleep. But now it's a different story because the population has grown greater, and we're looking for what? Industry, industry, small business, CBDs, central business districts, things like that. That'll maintain the people. Then, then that would have a way to maintain their property. Absolutely. So we, we're in Illinois Small Business Development Center, so we're designated by the state of DCO to be that and then National Trade. So what we do, we know this is a common problem. We work with the city of Chicago on this very same topic, and this is what we're going to go through in the commercial section. The retail, as we know it as of yesterday, is gone, or is seriously declining. You can see that through the major retailers like Macy's and Ultra Foods and all the others that are closing doors. And some of the questions are, what are we going to do with all this vacant, commercial retail space? How do we start engaging entrepreneurs to see that, hey, you know what, maybe we don't try to do a Las Vegas strip. Maybe we focus on an intersection. Maybe we focus on how do we get, pack that intersection so we have hubs? And that's what we're doing in the city, that's what we're doing with folks on Top Island. And then once you start building that sort of momentum, you're able, you're able to attract, because those people are working at industrial parks, they're going to say, where am I going to go for lunch? Where am I going to go, what if I, you know, at the work day? What if, the people who live here, is there a nightlife? Where do they go for a drink? Where do they go for to take their family? So those are the kind of questions. It's not always, let's land a big one. It's always, how do we start building up the momentum from the talent that you already have here?
Thank you. And so we've got a lot of examples among our team. We understand the issues. There is no easy answer, but I think we've got half the strategies to get you there. So just another way to look at the housing issues is that 70% of your renters are cost burdened. That means they're spending over 30% of their income for housing. But in terms of homeowners, only 30% of your homeowners. That's a really low number. I mean, I've been doing this 20 years, and I've never seen a number that low. So the flip side of the low-cost housing is that it's affordable. So we have to build the confidence on the repairs and the upkeep. But we also have to look at renters as potential homeowners. And so what are the supports? What are the access, the homebuyer programs, et cetera, with the training so that we can grow that base of homebuyers so there's more demand in the builds? And the best way to get demand is your homegrown. Those are your employees, those are people that already live in the community, and so you want to encourage them to buy homes. If they can get themselves into homeownership, they're in a much better situation than now. Also, as I said before, it's holding landlords accountable that are bringing in that rent that they keep those properties up to date. So we're going to be looking at that throughout this process. All right, so for each section, my data input, we have been spending a lot of time in the community, and so we've drafted some goals, but we wanted to get your input out of it. So this is just for housing, and this is the 30,000-foot level. We have an advisory committee that's meeting a week from tonight, so they're going to take the input you provide and then start talking about objectives and projects and things to actually do. But tonight, we kind of want to give them direction because you are two policy bodies. Give direction to the advisory committee. So number one, stabilize residential neighborhoods. That's what I've been hearing over the last 15 minutes. Relate that, rebuild confidence in the housing market so that people will want to buy homes here. Number three, promote homeownership. Four, renter stability and create a path to homeownership. And number five, plan for new housing in strategic areas to meet long-term demand. Is this in the right ballpark? Are we heading in the right direction on these? Yeah? Anything missing from this list? We're going to get more specific as time goes on. The big picture, any big housing issues we see? Okay.
Because I guess a lot of your renters are in the building of Section 8. They're not going to buy a home. The problem is paying.
So we understand that, and we've worked in a lot of areas with subsidies. There are standards to those homes, and they're supposed to be visited, et cetera. So we're going to be looking at that. We're also going to be looking at what other sources of revenue there are. So it's a complex housing market, but I understand some of those Section 8 residents, though, get better jobs. We also, this relates economic development. We want to make sure that your residents get access to better-paying jobs. If they have more income, your housing problem kind of goes away if your income goes up. And so we've got to look at both sides of the coin at this, but we do understand vouchers that are up there. All right, I'm going to turn it over to my peer, Bobby Maradeti, to walk us through some of the land uses.
Thanks, Seth. Hi, I'm Antonio Tesca. Yeah, we're just going to run through a little bit of existing conditions just to get an understanding of where the land uses are here. So if you look on, up here on the handout, the biggest kind of understanding of this is looking at the pie chart and really understanding 8% of the village is single-family. 17% multifamily, and about 3% mobile home. So looking on the map, really the yellow represents all the residential area within the village. A couple of key other issues of land uses really is the railroad, kind of the right-of-way utilities for the railroad, and then also stormwater, like Scott had mentioned earlier. So we're just kind of getting an understanding of what's existing here before we can move on to kind of future land uses. So you should all be familiar, this is a zoning map, looking at what can actually be built within the land uses. So similar to land uses, looking at, really you have residential and you have industrial. So residential, more in the yellow, and industrial in purple. You can see the majority of the purple is already in the logistics center, and you have a little bit left to the south in the existing South Point in industrial part. And really, if you look at the colors, where the red, right where I-394 and Torrance, you start to see kind of where your commercial centers are really going to be located. And kind of like what Abraham and Scott were saying, those are where we're going to be looking for really commercial development within the village area. So understanding that I-394 is your lifeline. A lot of people coming in and out. And then Torrance, where you really have the municipal center where we're at right now, and looking at development right around here. So this map really shows, Scott was talking about the one-and-a-half-mile planning area, really looking at what else outside South Village can be planned for. So as you can see, South Village in the blue really kind of gives the full boundary, and then looking at where the gray is, understanding that those are all the municipalities surrounding South. And then everything that is kind of left out, these pie holes, are really just unincorporated areas. So some of the holes we're looking for is planning those unincorporated areas. Kind of what Scott had mentioned, these are preliminary. We really want to get feedback of all of you, understanding, you know, if we're on the right track, if we need to add something else. So really, the first, one of the first holes we're looking at is plan for a balanced tax base that can support local services. So really reinvesting in South Village and understanding what the demand is for the South, for the village. So looking at residential, commercial, industrial, open space, and community facilities. Really, the other thing is, like we mentioned before, small business, it's really promoting reuse, rehabilitation, redevelopment of what's already existing. So looking at some of that. And like we had mentioned before, with really the land uses, the zoning, you can see that 80% is residential. So what we're trying to do is really create, promote strong cohesive neighborhoods, really creating connection and identity for all of the neighborhoods. Somehow connecting either that be with parks or some sort of, you know, trillos system, bike somewhere where you can walk and bike within the neighborhoods, you know, explore, connect to the parks, connect to the schools, but doing that through the neighborhood areas. Anybody want to have anything with the land use schools?
Excuse me. How hard is it to get businesses into South Village? You know, I look at the Cree area or I-394, at State Road to Richardson Square Road there, that big development there where, been there 10 years, and no one came in, well, culverts and the coals. The land is there, it's been all opportunities, but nothing's happened in there. So compared to that, how hard is this for us? We don't have that much commercial. We have three strip malls here in South Village to bring business into.
Neighbors that we work in, this is another common challenge, you know. How many people actually used to live in the city of Chicago or live on the South Side of Chicago? Everybody kind of knows. The people who are here know the challenge it has been, when you look at different neighborhoods of getting different industries in your neighborhood. That's always been a challenge, getting restaurants. Now, we have land for miles. We have a market for miles, but getting, it's almost like a song and dance. You have to convince people and industries, usually the people who would invest into neighborhoods or would invest their business into the neighborhoods because they have some connection with it. That's usually the case. Now, there are a number of different franchise owners that own, you know, Pizza Huts of the world, you know, Olive Gardens of the world. Usually you have to attract those individuals because we found sometimes the big national corporations, you know, they're looking at what Scott talked about with certain boundaries. And it really, you know, having that deep connection is a little bit challenging. But we found that if we start talking with local organizations, local owners, then that helps bring more business to that quarter. So I don't really want to lay in rest upon, let's try to go after the multinational companies or the, you know, big companies, but focus also on, how do we bring in the owner? We have, there's an owner who worked in the South Side for a long time. He owned almost 30 different Pizza Huts. You know, we know an owner who owned the grocery store, was a franchise owner for Sabo Huts, and now he's partnered with the Jules, I mean, the Whole Foods thing. Huts, and now he's partnered with the Jules, I mean, the Whole Foods thing. So there are a number of different people that you can connect with that we have to find that would locate in that commercial quarter.
Excuse me, but what happens when you get a whole set, Whole Foods there? What happened to the sturps there, the walls? People stopped shopping there? Did those properties go down?
We're going to bring Abraham back up. We're just about to present that on that, and then all the story from the advisory committee last time. But did you have any other?
Yes. And I can be corrected on this because I thought years ago, wasn't there a proposal to have an airport somewhere south?
Yes.
There was a proposal for an airport further south. And because based on that, the land was developed for the possibility of businesses that would benefit from that airport down there. This is what I'm thinking. And that's why I see the development, I saw the development, and why years ago, 394 stopped at US 30, and they extended it out further south because of the plan for the airport. But that plan didn't material.
It's a lot of talks, yeah.
So I'm thinking that maybe what should happen, and I'm just, I'm a newbie here, so couldn't it be, we plan to do this, but what would happen if this falls through? Because people are concerned about the economic development and the residential development in all these areas. So, I mean, I can stand corrected, but what can we do?
Right. You're both heading in the right direction. Let me just put some facts on the table, come back and bring Abraham back in just a second. Chairman, I'm Dexter. This is kind of the answer to your question. In terms of national retail trend, look at how high warehouse stores were. That's that blue light on the top, all the way through the 90s until you get to 2005 and fell off the cliff. No one opens warehouse stores anymore. They came back slightly. That most retail went down below 0% growth, meaning there was net decline in retail nationally. It's now up a little bit. The only real positive point of this is that red line at the top is restaurants. Restaurants are growing nationally and are growing in the Chicago area. People want experience. If they want the quantity of goods it used to have, they're generally going online for that. You still see niche stores. I just went into Coles today, but I only saw 20, 30 cars out front. It's pretty hard to keep a store going of that size with 20, 30 cars. I've been there Saturday afternoon, not that many more cars. Culver's is a successful chain all across the Chicago area that's been growing. So retail is a tough business. I mean, the economic development in Illinois was traditionally retail development. And that's because of the way our tax structure is created from municipal perspective, sales tax, chase bills, municipal. But the reality is, the growing economy is much more on the industrial side. And the good news of this is you have a large industrial park and some smaller industrial parks here that are doing pretty well. And those are better-paying jobs usually in that retail. If you look, if you ask any economist, very few economists will tell you retail is economic development. It really isn't economic development. It's really local sales. Industry creates that multiplier effect that really doesn't happen nearly as much as retail development. I'm not saying not to go after retail. I'm just saying that you need a diversified set of commercial development. If you look at retail, this is Sock Village sales. You can see there was generally an increase, peaked in 2006 to 2008, went down, and then it's pretty much stayed about flat for the past four or five years. As it fell off the cliff here and not all the way down, it's been stayed pretty steady over the years. So we know that Indiana and Will County are lower tax areas, and people are going to do a large shopping, may go across the borders. But if you provide the right experience, the right store, the friendly people, they'll stay up. So again, like the housing issue, we're not going to pretend and say there's just one answer to this. Of course, we want to have a whole business community. But let's look at entrepreneurs. Let's look at service-based industries which are growing faster. Let's look at industry. Let's look at the whole picture. And then also, some places to go to eat, mine clothes, et cetera. Does that make sense? Okay. The next map is a little hard to see, but essentially, you don't want those red dots in your community. Those red dots are large shopping centers that are distressed. There isn't one within your borders, but you also don't have a large shopping center in your borders. But you can see all throughout South Cook County and interestingly, throughout Northwest Indiana, there's distressed retail centers. And so we've overbuilt for retail as a nation. And the good news is, you don't have a large shopping center here like Park Forest or others that have had to get themselves out of that. And they're working hard in those communities to do that. So you've got a cleaner slate here. You've got good traffic in some of your streets. So we're going to work with you. But you see Cook County is over 10 million square feet of distressed retail. Okay. So the industrial side is going in the right direction. And if you look at the Chicago area, the fastest-growing part of the economy is industry. And that's what sets Chicago apart from the East Coast cities, which don't have a lot of industry. We have a much more diverse economy in our area than other cities. And you're doing very well. Wynn Pat was at the last advisory committee, it was a public meeting. He stated, why did he choose, we asked him, why did he choose Sock Village? Well, he liked access to labor force. They already located in South Chicago Heights, and they knew the employees in this area, and they liked the employment. That was his number-one answer. We moved here because we wanted to be here. Their choice was between choice or where they have another facility located here, and they chose here because they knew the employee base, and they could ship to either coast within a day. You can't do that from Toronto. You can do that from here. You're right off of IA. You can get anywhere in the country within a day. Well, that was very important. He also said an interesting thing, that he wanted a showcase facility. So he built a show key. The company built a showcase facility, a modern facility, that they could bring customers that bring Fortune 500 companies from all over the world to Sock Village. So that is, keep that image in your mind, of Sock Village as a showcase community. And that's really the goal of economic development, is to attract people because they want to be here. This is another way to look at the state's statistics, showing about 3 million square feet of industrial inventory in Sock Village. And you can see that compared to other communities throughout South Cook, which is where Sock Village obviously is. Top of that is Eastern Will County, to give you your variance. And then, of course, you've got Northwest Indiana to the east of the village. You rank seventh in terms of industrial share among 50 municipalities across this area. Total inventory ranks ninth. You score very well on industry in this region. This is one of the healthiest industrial areas of the Midwest, and you're right in the middle. So you're in a good position. This is another way, again, to look at same data. The largest share of industry is in fact warehouse and distribution in the South Cook area, that's 25 million square feet. Manufacturing, about half that, at 12 million square feet. Flex hour and deep space, we think there might be some room for that in Sock Village, kind of smaller spaces. Companies working on their basement service industries and et cetera that want to have a convenient nearby location that's affordable. You've got the land, you know the developers, why not have that in Sock Village? Food processing, that's a, we've worked with a lot of clients in South Cook. Food is a major growing part of the economy and is very strong in South Cook. And so then there's other industrials as well. But you can see how they cluster around Sock Village, right there in the center of that. TIP districts, you have a TIP district in place, it covers the logistics center. We've got TIP districts that's near to Spiring and Sock Point. And so we want to look at what incentives there already are, what incentives might be needed to stay competitive, because we've worked with Cook County. And also, most of Sock Village is in enterprise zone. There's also a new federal program. Has anyone heard of this, New Opportunity Zone? You don't have to apply for it? Joe knows it. So part of the tax rewrite, no one has really heard about, is buried in the federal tax rewrite, is that governors could nominate certain census tracks where companies that are bringing back money from overseas could invest in these census tracks, tax-free, and not pay taxes for 10 years. About 60% of Sock Village is eligible for this new program. Those companies don't have to apply to anyone to use the program. It is a tax-administered program. So the company will be advised by their accountant if they want to diversify their portfolio and invest in real estate or other types of economic investment. As long as it's a qualified census tract, they don't have to apply to the state, they don't have to apply to the village, they don't have to apply to the US government. They automatically get that tax-free growth of their investment if they put that money in a census tract. No one's done this yet, it's a brand-new program, but that's something that you can market because you have that in that every community.
Is that also, it's not part of the TIP type deal?
You can double that. So you can have the TIP and museum project.
What about the client's aid?
It's irrespective of that. So it's a tax mechanism, it's not a program that you apply to.
So we get the jobs, but no money?
No, this is federally exempt. Corporate federally exempt, so you wouldn't lose any money from that.
From the state tax, we should go get that. If you're letting them get it tax-free, where do we get our money from them?
Different kind of taxes. So the village, the village gets the property taxes. This would be corporate federally exempt.
But I mean, could they still apply for all three or just two?
That would be up to the village in terms of whether you want to allow it. But the federal program is completely different. I want to bring Abraham to talk a little bit more about economic development, particularly in the suburban context, and then walk through the goals.
Thank you. So again, my organization, we focus a lot on working with municipalities, community organizations. And we have four major pillars that we work through. Small business development, housing services, counseling services, real estate development, and workforce development. Now, workforce development is in its infancy stage, we're still in a pilot program. But our biggest sort of program that we do is the housing and small business. Through our, we have a company that we do, is Genesis Housing. We provide housing counseling, those, and save foreclosures. Last year, we saved over 500 families from foreclosing of their homes. So those services, what we normally would do is, even for small business, we would set up office hours in the location so it's not that they have to travel all the way to our location. We will go and partner, because we are partners with local banks like US Bank that is all down the street. We're, you know, into most of the municipalities, community centers. We'll meet with them, and we'll set up those counseling hours. So what we're bringing to the table as far as, is really to assist the municipality in those services, in those four pillars. And really listening to your goals, understanding your goals, and seeing how can we be of greater assistance. So, you know, if we're looking at impact or growth, are we looking to grow our residents by how many? How many residents are we aiming for the next five years, 10 years? And then that goes into your market, how you market your city. Because the one thing you do have that, I mean, many other areas wish they had, is that they have a, you know, majority young-based population. So that yields in itself opportunities for it. And not to mention what Scott mentioned about the education, is you're finding more and more college-educated, higher-educated, and so that yields opportunities for other educational institutions and targets like that. So our goal is, we're going to look to support commercial and retail development. We're working on right now, as an agency, there's, like I said, those who promote it in the South Side, we're renovating the 115th and Halsted Bacon Jewel Site. That's a $15 million renovation, looking to bring 400 jobs in call center, as well as a clinic, and another region, a food court. So we're looking at other ways to be able to renovate and redevelop vacant storefronts other than, let's try to get another retail in. We look at other uses as well. So our goal is to help look at the needs that you have, and even look at areas where we believe that you have a strong commercial and retail presence. And we can be able to look at how can we capture that through the traffic that's flowing through 394, through other major quarters that you have. Provide industrial development to provide employment and tax base for the community again, that's something that Scott touched on already. Advance entrepreneurial, too, this is the part where we love the most, because we will work with entrepreneurs when it comes to developing a small, a plan, a business plan, developing a marketing strategy, developing a financial package, seeing, you know, is their product, is what they're trying to sell work, or even work in the marketplace right now? How do we not duplicate services? Like in Chicago, we have what we call salon row. Have you ever heard of that? Where you just have a whole strip filled with barber shops and everything else. Well, you're saturating the market that way. And so now, how do we look at entrepreneurs and say, okay, what are some of the things that you're looking to do? Mainly in food, mainly in, you know, you've got a lot of people going into transportation, their own little transportation business. You have those who are in tech. So given that you have an industrial park, tech is, could be one of the possibilities as well. But you also have a younger market here, a younger employment base. So tech is really growing and getting bigger. So this yields opportunities for entrepreneurs to come in and say, how can we use Sock Village as that location or destination for small business services, for small business in these different industries? And then plan for infrastructure to serve the industrial and commercial development. Again, you know, that's what Scott mentioned, using some of these federal programs, using programs that has to deal with new market tax credits, programs that has to deal with the TIP, of course, enterprise zones, hub zones. These different things can, you can utilize to improve your infrastructure. Also, too, you're looking at schools and education, hospitals, clinics, those kind of things can be a good plan for infrastructure improvement because, again, if this is going to be, if this community is a transit community that as of right now, what can make it a destination community? And that's where we will come in, even beyond the plan, far as South CDC will help in these various different areas.
Any questions for me? Transportation. So we've talked about this a lot, we've got a great transportation network here, give you your bearings of the map. Seaside Village is kind of in the center to the right, the 394 going north-south. Just west of the village, another client has been trying to build a metro southeast line, and that would be just west of your village's line, about a mile and a half away. There's already a pretty good pace service for the suburbs. A lot of other communities have lost their bus lines. You still have hourly serving here, shaking your head, not as good as you'd like. But in this area, it is better than a lot of communities, and that does get you over to either metro directly to the north side of service. It'll always be improved. So we're going to look holistically at some of these key bottlenecks. The 394 Sock Trail intersection in particular is difficult to cross if you're pedestrian or bike, certainly. And that is something that the turn movements of trucks is difficult as well. So infrastructure engineering, Eric Patterson is part of our team, they do a great job. They're going to work with us to come up with some practical solutions and line those up to plumbing sources, and to take some of the ideas that came out of the 394 plan and help them move to implementation. You've got about 41,000 cars per day on 394, about 5,800 trucks a day. That is kind of the backbone of economic development. You've got about 13,000 on Sock Trail. A rule of thumb in the industry is, a lot of national retailers want to get to 20,000. And so you have that certainly on 394. You don't really have that on Torrance and Sock Trail. So you're really looking at some of your smaller businesses, some of your local restaurants and others to this intersection here. You've got a McDonald's here and a Walgreens already, you've got a small grocery store here. But how do we look at, how do we really plan for this to be a quality commercial center at Torrance, Sock Trail, and also 394? And we'll be spending a lot of time on that. A lot of that relates to transportation. And a lot of that relates to transportation. So this, again, this is the Stock Trail, three-nine-four. We haven't started the recommendations yet, we're just trying to get a sense of the goals. But in our scope of work, we're going to put particular attention to this intersection and try to make improvements to that. There are a couple of different recommendations in that three-nine-four plan we're going to look at. We're also going to look at Stock Trail and Torrance Avenue right over here. As Joe keeps up pointing out to me, there's no sidewalks. So developments unfortunately were approved without those sidewalks in place. And so we're going to have to help you find where you're going to get the resources. People moving to Stock Trail, they just expect to have those. And so they went off to college, they go off to Indiana or Illinois, they were used to riding the bike everywhere, they were used to, even if they have a car. A lot of people now choose, they want to exercise, they want a bike, even if they've got that car. If you don't have the bike trails in place, where are they going to bike to? You've got all these great resources, really close by. And there's massive plum breed forest preserve we're going through today, it's beautiful there. But there's no easy way to get there. So we're looking at what are the best ways to get there? You've got a median, we've got twenty-third street. That could be a really nice amenity there. You know, we can get a lot of mileage out of that for people who want to move here and have that active lifestyle. So what are the draft goals? Improve safety capacity needs at I three-nine-four and Stock Trail. Improve pedestrian crossing sidewalks and facilities all up and down Stock Trail, Torrance Avenue. Plan for pedestrian bicycle network to reach destinations such as schools. There's already a sidewalk planned to get over to Bloom High School. Parks, trails, you've got like all the pieces, but they're not connected well. And so how do we help you do that? Freight infrastructure is key here to meet demands, support economic development. Adequate transit and alternative transportation. Alternative transportation means bike shares, car shares, and all those things that are out there, Uber, Lyft, et cetera, to meet needs and present some issues. Did we miss anything in terms of transportation? All right. So I think I just covered this a second ago. But you've got all these parks scattered about, and you've got this very large forest preserve. There's not a lot of amenities in the forest preserve now. So let's come up with a plan. Let's talk to the forest preserve district. You're improving other forest preserves, so let's get the plan here to have those improvements. Can you think of what the cost would be to create that today? You've got the resource, now make it more usable. You've got scattered parklets all throughout town. How is one park different than the other park? Is the playground equipment maintained? How can you get money to improve the playground equipment? How do you get people out there, not just the kids? But what about seniors? What about people with disabilities? What about really anyone who wants to take a walk in the park? You could improve this and we've made the baseball field, the soccer. I mean, there's a lot of things that people expect if they're going to move to the community and want to have those amenities. So you've got that. Stormwater is a major issue here. C map is going to provide an engineering consultant to help map out, the logistics center to determine what part of that stormwater needs to be saved versus what part can be built. And then how do we use that as a resource? Maybe a walking path around there. Maybe employees want to get outside very much and get to know the community and be able to walk throughout that area. All right. In terms of draft goals, improve connection to existing and proposed open space and natural resources. Plan for adding stormwater facilities to support reinvestment and enhance the use of existing parks and open space through unique design and target programming. That kind of leads into part of the community identity. I mean, what you've got in Stock Village is you've got this, these residential neighborhoods and industrial park and all these natural resources. Think of how that could appeal to people who are thinking about choosing from one community to the other. If you're moving, if you're moving to Chicago Heights or further north, even in some of the supposedly wealthier suburbs, they may not have all those natural resources, local spaces that you have. And maybe there's a way to leverage this, help market the community better. Okay. In terms of next steps, please visit the website, see what's there. Like I said, if you're someplace in Stock Village or somewhere else and you like something or you don't like it, please take a picture and tell us why you're taking it, because we won't know if you don't. But that's really important. You'll then see your picture perhaps at the next meeting. And that's a great thing. Or just any idea you have, you can just go to the website at any time. You can also email me directly with any ideas you have. A week from tonight is the second advisory committee, so they're going to pick up. We're going to guys left off, we're going to present the goals back we had tonight. And then they're going to break down into groups and start talking about, I didn't want to let these ideas. On September twelfth will be the first community workshop, and that will be right here as well. And that is really a chance for as many residents as possible, businesses, employees to all come together to think through these issues. We're then going to have the advisory committee. Three, on September twenty-fourth, another community workshop. You also have to come back to both of our at some point. It's not in the calendar yet, but we'll have another chance to come to you. But we hope that you all come to the community workshops, not only to participate, but to listen to the comments of other people of the community as well. We're planning on January twenty-fourth, the advisory committee, to make a recommendation back to all of you, for you then to take it through the public approval process, which would be January to February. So this process moves fairly quickly. We think that this pace gives enough time for participation, but also keeps things moving so you're able to then feed that into your budget and grant request going forward into next year. Any questions or comments?
Any comments from the board, first of all?
I have one. Joe, can you just refresh from my memory, from both an educational and business perspective, how much representation is there on the advisory committee for both school districts, plural, and the village businesses?
I think invitations went out to both one-nine-four, one-seven, two-three, and one-six-eight to participate, as well as District Philo Saints. So school leaders will all ask. The business committee, to take over what's industrial, kind of the basis of that. And then we get representation from the zoning board, as well as presidents who want to participate in the law.
So for your first meeting that already took place, how many of the school districts actually showed up and participated?
Just one-six-eight.
Okay. And how many businesses?
I don't remember. I'm staying right through.
And how many village businesses participated in that first meeting?
Do we have a full house here? I think there's probably about five businesses, about fifteen.
Yeah, a lot of industrial, yeah, industrial.
And did we also open it up to some of our current investors, ID landlords, to speak to some of the housing concerns?
No, I mean, that might be something we could do in terms of, you know, unless we wanted to do that.
But did we do that through a focus group? So if you have names in mind, we do a one broker on the, broker, not landlord, it was a broker on the advisory committee, but we could do a focus group on landlords.
That's good. Does she like to see a copy of the sign sheet?
Sure.
Jocke, Bureau.
You mentioned that some of the properties come from the South Suburban Land Bank. Do we have any properties listed in Land Bank now? That's located in Stock Village?
I know that there was one at this time. We did have a discussion with the South Suburban Land Bank in terms of adding additional homes and opportunities for the South Suburban Land Bank in them. And those conversations have been kind of, which was.
So, yeah, so we are aware of that. And there's a possibility there on the work of South Suburban, in some cases, South Suburban also works with county land bank, depending on how complex the deal is. And so we're very familiar with them, and so we definitely want to tee up some ideas to them, to acquire more properties in Stock Village.
The reason I'm going to ask is because there are a lot of residents that might be interested in maybe their house next door that's like, you know, that's quite a car. Or, you know, we talked about investors all through the presentation, but there might be individual resident in that world.
It's an excellent point. The number one way the land bank provides properties is actually through neighbors. And so, yes, like the demolition program, that's a brainy sport to, you know. One, like vacant and abandoned, not properties that are occupied, but if it really can't be rehabbed, those are often given at a very, very low dollar amount to a neighbor who then agrees to pay the property taxes more forward. That, by the way, so we're spending a lot of time in the land banks, the economics of it. So the question came up before, what if it's not possible to re-up? A lot of times that's because there's so much back taxes on the property. So I think, so basically the way the land bank works is it clears all those back taxes so there's a fresh start. Well, if that property is sold under value, let's say that property is sold for five hundred dollars, but the land bank doesn't give the deed until the property's brought back to code. So basically, the way the economics works is that they sell the property for a very, very low amount, but you don't get the full deed until you rehab the property, bring it to code. That's what makes the numbers work for the program to work.
Yeah, I think my home is into individuals.
Exactly. So that could be, that could be a homeowner on the block, it could be just a small contractor in the community. It's a way to grow your local businesses, because you might have contractors that live here and why don't, you know, and they all do work here now. Well, this gives them some business to do. So it's great.
My question to you, Joe, is that you indicated that you got a local technical assistant grant last year. How much was that?
I hope the contract price was, was it one-hundred-and-fifteen?
Yes.
That was a separate stormwater.
One-hundred-and-fifteen thousand?
Thousand, yeah. And then it was a, I think it was a twenty thousand individual dollar, several plays from C map for that.
Oh, C map gave us twenty thousand?
Well, I mean, it's, there are costs associated with it, so. But C map's paying the cost for TESSA as a consultant on it. They really managed that with five thousand.
Oh, now this is managed?
Yeah. And then there was a separate stormwater component into this plan as well, that C map's funded directly. And I want to say that's about twenty thousand. So my conversation about this.
I'm sorry, you said something about, you said stormwater or something?
It's a separate component, stormwater component.
So stormwater is how much?
I want to say it was about twenty thousand. So it was fifteen thousand.
Oh, C map?
C map pledged that one.
Okay.
Because they had additional funds that they wanted to use that piece of it, because they were devastated.
So have we used any of these funds?
In the village?
Yeah.
Well, we are. I mean, indirectly, we're getting a plan on it, that's, that's what it is.
We using it now?
It's part of the plan that's going on. The C map contracted with TESSA and with the consultant for the stormwater.
So how was this TESSA attracted us? I don't know. I don't know. The source of funding, you know, we need the funding, we need the.
Wait, question. So it's about a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. And that covers TESSA, it covers our South CDC, ADCom, as well as infrastructure engineers.
Okay.
And then, I don't think they've been selected yet because of the fiscal year, but but there'll be another engineering firm that will do the stormwater.
What do we pay you going forward? Right now, you're free, right?
No.
Well, I mean, somebody's paying for it, but we're not.
No. Wait a minute. It's a grant that we're giving.
There's never going to be a cost besides projects. Do we have to pay that?
No.
All right.
The fellows being being directed across.
For the board, is there any more question? Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pondexter for the zoning board. Okay. At this time, if anybody in the audience that has a question. I have the mic. Go up to the podium and give us your name, or if you have any questions from the public, we'll try to address them and concern you to tonight's presentation. Okay. At this time, I'll ask the zoning board to make their, the jury.
Make a motion for the jury. Is it?
No.
Second.
Thank you. I'll ask for a motion from the board of trustees.
So, second.
Moved by trustee, Lou Pondexter, by trustee, Bureau, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Hopefully this will be ongoing. If you'd like to be on any of the, because there's a lot of people out here that are already involved, if you'd like to get involved, and it's a little audience too, please come up and give us your name, and then we can get in touch with you and you can be part of.